National Board of Education Budget Committee Meeting Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021 at 6:07 PM. Okay. I'm going to take the role. Ms. Ms. Jen Bishop is not, not here yet. Heather Raymond, I do not also see Heather Raymond.
She's having trouble with her computer. I don't know. She was hoping that she sent an email and said that the man was out working in the tree trying to get it back up and moving, so.
Okay. Um. We have. Someone just, okay. Sharon Gilio.
Here.
Okay. Jessica Brown.
Here.
Dottie Oden.
Here.
Paula Johnson.
Present.
Sandra Zee.
Yeah.
Gloria Timmons is not here at the moment. Raymond Guarino is here. We have six, so we have a quorum. We also have Dr. McKinney, Dr. Andre, Mr. Parker, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Rodriguez, and this Dorothy Ogara. And did I miss anyone? Ms. Can, Ms. Cancelo is with us also. So. I'm going to open up the meeting. I'm going to give the floor to Administration. Also, Mr. Sean Smith just joined us. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McKinney and to Administration. We have Technology Plant Operations, Career and Technical Education.
So. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I think Mr. Rodriguez is ready to go, so.
Okay.
I'll see my screen.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. All right. So I'm Greg Rodriguez. I am the Director of Technology and I'm presenting the Information Technology Budget for the National School District. So this is our staff. It is, I don't need to recite everybody's naming position, but this is who we currently have in the department right now in the positions that they currently hold. So Seven's Assistant Systems Administrators, I'm an Office Manager, an I4C Coordinator, and three System Administrators and one Network Administrator and one IT Director. As a Department of Technology, we offer to promote learning, teaching, productivity through up-to-date infrastructure and computing devices. And when you want to gain an understanding of building administrator and teachers' technology needs, and how we meet those needs and how we can improve the existing systems, we want to improve technology for ease of use for teaching staff and also students as well. As we've found out in the past year or so, students rely just as much on technology as the teaching staff does, so. That's definitely a big focus now. We also want to improve, you know, opportunities for students to access the latest educational tools, software, devices, you know, to enhance the ability to learn, and we also want to provide a safe digital environment for all students. For the rationale of the budget, Contract Services, these are, this is to perform high-level duties that kind of are outside of our skill set, but we still work in conjunction with these vendors or companies. We, through network support, specialty wiring projects and E-rate services, computer software, so we, things like Microsoft Office 365, Aspen, and other cloud services like Google, computer equipment, and that ranges from desktops to Chromebooks, laptops, and professional development. And we want to invest in our staff to help teach the, the teachers and the staff across the district. So when we get better, everybody else gets better. This is a comparison of our operating budget from 2021 to 2022. 2021, $2,286,805 compared to 2022 of Is the appendix? All right. So this, this is users per grade level, and this is as of last Thursday, so I believe that was the 25th, 24th to 25th. So this, these numbers are as of last Thursday. So. So for students, we have at the high schools, 3,772. And for staff, it is 573. And this is important later on, and I'll get to that point as we move forward. With computing devices and the amount of staff that we have. So with the middle schools, we have 2,350, and then we have 379 staff. And the elementary schools, we have 4,606 students and 944 staff. And there, there are asterisks with staff because there are district-wide positions that float in between. And we, I, the users that I have here for staff especially are the ones that actually use computing devices. So they're positions in the, in the district that don't require accounts or a device to be used, like a home computer or a Chromebook or anything like that. So these are only users per grade level for staff that actually use a device. Chromebooks. As Dr. McKinney has so lovingly called me, the Captain, Captain Chromebook, that's what I'm called. So this has been a hot topic of discussion even before COVID. So. The problem was still there before COVID, and the problem's going to be, I hate to say, but even worse after. So 3,500 Chromebooks were ordered in August 2020. These are purchased with a CARES Act grant. These are ordered to assist with remote and hybrid instruction, and also to restore the previous inventory of damaged and lost Chromebooks. Unfortunately, there is no delivery date yet because of the nationwide shortage, as you said, the global shortage. But if we were to even get them in late May or June, it'd be highly unlikely that we would get them out even to the end of the school year for them. So just because they, they too take a long time to enroll and distribute, it's a, it's a whole process. So just, just for context, last year before COVID, we had, or right as COVID was beginning, we had 660 Chromebooks, and it took a staff of 14, about five days to enroll that many, and that's with everything being dropped in the district just to do that. So you can just imagine how much of a task that is for just that many people in five days for 660. We're talking five times that amount, more than five times that amount. So as part of this operating budget, we're looking to spend 360 to 380, almost 381,000 budget for Chromebooks. Approximately 1,500 Chromebooks. However, we just got pricing this morning that the cost of Chromebooks is going up significantly, and so is the license. So current, as of 3.1, the price went from 193 per unit to 218 per unit. So that's a significant increase of $25 per Chromebook, and the license has changed from 24. And actually, on 3.5, the licenses will be changing from $24 to $30.50. So that's a, that's quite the increase. So this will affect everything in terms of how many Chromebooks we can purchase, including the license fee, because we have to buy a license for every Chromebook that we buy. So in actuality, a Chromebook will cost us $248.50 for every purchase. So it's quite a bit. With the Chromebooks, we've experienced roughly a 15% loss from remote learning. We do expect it to be much, much higher from the 2020 to 2021 school year because they've been with the students the entire year. So. We'll see what happens. You know, we're, we are holding our breath to see what we're going to be expecting, but as Chromebooks come back damaged, we do our best to repair and get them out back to the schools as soon as possible. So when, when the technicians are there and some of our temp helps, they do work on these every single day. So aging Chromebooks, so as, as last year, as I explained, every Chromebook has an auto-update policy, and that's the Chromebook's end of life. Our HP G3 and G4 has an auto-update ending this September, and that's roughly 3,500 Chromebooks that are going end-of-life this summer that are going to be taken out. So what happens, an auto-update ends. Software updates no longer be provided. No, we won't receive any technical support from Google. And as expected, the devices may not work. So we don't want to take a chance on devices not working and then being stuck. So with no updates, no security updates or bug fixes. So that's what we run into with an expired Chromebook. So will the Chromebooks be functional? Sure. According to Google, they may still work. However, there will be functional limitations. A lot of our applications, especially our testing applications, require a certain version of a browser. And if we don't have that browser up to date or doesn't go past a certain point, these Chromebooks are essentially, you know, of no use to us because we can't really test them. Yes, websites will still work, but there are extensions that we put on the Chromebook for testing to actually work. So we don't want to take that chance. The devices will become less and less functional, and also there's a, you know, how much, how much do we want to put into repairing the Chromebook that's worth, let's say, $80, right? Do we want to put in a $50 screening? There's no really return to investment after a certain point. So it's like putting a brand-new transmission in 1991 Ford Escort. It just doesn't make sense. So. The device durability of these devices, of the Chromebooks are four years. We really, this is really the first cycle we've had Chromebooks that are, you know, going away. So we're seeing, they're not built like, you know, built like a tank. So they are repairable in, in some cases, not all, just because of their Chromebooks. I don't really, it's just been there. They are considered an IT disposable device just because of how long their shelf life is. To make Chromebooks more sustainable, Mr. Donovan and I have been working to see if we can, are there leasing options out there? So we wouldn't have such a huge budget. Year to replenish the Chromebooks. So the desktops, a huge improvement that we made from last year. Part of the desktops that we, we took out were eight to 10 years old, and less than 100 in the district remain. So. We were replacing the rest of the older desktops this summer with about 20 to 25 spares. The computer labs at all three levels are up to date. They have the newest version of, of our desktops, which are one to two years old. We also put in the older desktops that we took out of the labs, improved hardware inside, so they're much faster, with faster boot up and application use. Thanks to Dr. McKinney back, I want to say, last August, I believe, we worked on a Title IV grant to put industry-standard desktops in the STEM labs at all the middle schools. So that was one of the things that, you know, we wanted to do for the middle school kids. It's kind of like a feeder program, the NTC folks. So they have up-to-date computing environments, so it wouldn't be such of a transition going to the high school. So that's, that's one of the things that we really wanted to focus on. Most classroom computers are up to date. We have, in most of them, 120 gigabytes solid-state drives. If I were to put a computer in front of you and it had a solid-state drive, a hard disk drive, a spinning disk, you would notice a difference, and you would want to hug your solid-state drive every time. So there's a huge difference in the solid-state drive, and most desktops in the district have, now have a solid-state drive. So that's a huge improvement right there. District Office will be upgraded this summer. It's, it's a lot of specialty apps in the district office, so we don't want to, you know, cause too much change. You may have to have them work side by side, and then, you know, ease the new desktops in. But we're working on it. We'll make sure we get that one. So recent IT improvements. So if you want to take a little sit back and just work in the midst of this lengthy list of things, but this is what we have. So we replaced 90% of the aging desktops, as I just said, upgraded our labs in conjunction with BrickLoom. As I also said, working with Dr. McKinney, we've upgraded all the STEM labs at the middle schools. We, I don't have any props like Gallagher, like from last year where I broke off a piece of a, piece of a patch panel and showed the rest of you, but that problem does not exist at the elementary and the high schools anymore. As part of the middle school project, we are going to be eliminating the rest of the split, split pair cabling with upgraded industry-standard patch panels. This is part of the JSFBC middle school project. So we've upgraded all the switches and access points in half the elementary schools and at both high schools. This is phase one of the project. The remaining, the remaining elementary schools, FMS and PMS, and FMS and PMS will be completed this summer. We're not doing Elm yet because it doesn't make sense to put new equipment into a school that, that is, that we're, we're just going to put it all brand-new when, when the new middle school is built. We've upgraded the fiber at the, at the middle schools. As we talked about bandwidth before this plumbing, right? So if you, if pipes are really small, not a lot can get through. So that also has to do with fiber. So we have a larger pipe at our schools. We, we can write back to school. So before, we had a fiber that was about 20 years old. Now it's all up-to-date fiber, so now we can write back about 10 gigabits per second as opposed to one gigabit per second, which we were before. So not to bore you all, but that's much better, 10 times better. And so we moved all of our email infrastructure from on-premises with a lot of quotas to Office 365. So virtually eliminating all quotas. So that means pretty much unlimited email. We've excessively enrolled and deployed 1,150 laptops of teachers and some of the staff through Microsoft Intune. That was completed very recently, and that was another large undertaking at the district. We've also increased our bandwidth from 2 gigabits per second to 8 gigabits, 8 gigabits per second. I mean, that was also a huge improvement. That's part of the remote and hybrid instruction that we wanted to do that for. This summer, we actually are putting out to bid our internet service provider through E-rate. So we're looking, we're not looking to change. If, if we do happen to change, you know, with E-rate, then through more competitive bids, well, whatever is best for the district as well is the direction we go. We've also implemented online registration through Aspen. That's a huge improvement because it takes away a lot of the printing costs, and then our data input is very clean because it's coming directly from the parent, and there's no transcribing with handwriting or anything like that. This is, this is straight from the parent to our Aspen, which is a student information system. I've also updated our mass communication system through Blackboard, and that upgrade took place over the winter, and I believe went live January 30th. So. Those are just some of the recent improvements that were, the recent improvements that we've done. So our upcoming projects are disaster recovery and redundancy at North High School. Right now, we have just our backup system over there, but if something, you know, were to happen at South, all of our data lies there. And if something catastrophic were to happen, we would still, without much notice, probably a second, we would have all these, well, I take that back. It wouldn't be a second, probably a half hour. All of our data would be back up and, and functional between the schools. So this is part of good IT planning and IT security, make sure the data is still up, up and running and continuous. So we're looking to start that project within the next couple of months to have that at North High School. Phase two of the network, network infrastructure upgrades. Some of the schools have two closets, but they have the older fiber in between them. So we really need to upgrade the fiber to a much upgraded, you know, OM3 fiber because we have an OM1 fiber right now. So that's part of that, and that's we're going to be using one-time funds in E-rate. The middle school access points, so as part of the JSFBC E-rate, we're looking to upgrade and mimic the elementary school, half the elementary schools, and then the high schools with high-density access points, which allows theoretically 100 devices per access point as opposed to 30. So 100 devices for a hotspot in one area, which is a huge improvement because it allows more people to connect rather seamlessly. Same thing with the, with the elementary schools. We're looking to improve these switches and access points because there are still old switches at those schools. There's still the 15-year-old switches, so we're looking to finish the upgrade for those. That's coming out of operating budget and using E-rate funds for that. And with the recent purchase of the Franklin Street School, we are looking to run fiber from City Hall to to Franklin Street. So that's, that's quite a large project in itself, and we have put out the bid those, that project right there. So. We're looking to get back some pretty competitive bids so we can, we can get that building up and running come the fall. And again, as I touched on before, we're looking to bid out our ISP through E-rate. So currently, we have Comcast, but we are entertaining bids from other companies. So this is our software budget. I don't think I need to go line by line with this. But there are some changes that we have made. One of the, it's mostly at the bottom. So we, we've added an updated version of QuickBooks. We had a version probably from 1996 or '8, was unbelievably old. So we have a newer version of QuickBooks, quicker, more user-friendly. Workday Insights. This is a, something working with Mr. Donovan and his, and his team to, for their budget software. Aspen Online Registration, as I touched on before, so we can have students, you know, register or have parents enroll students, you know, at a computer as opposed to pen and paper. I don't think there are much, many other changes besides that. Contract Services, so you know, some of the things that we've done, so we don't, last year, we had quite a bit for network infrastructure upgrade. Since we did most of those upgrades last year, we, we don't need that much for it, and we've put that money towards computer equipment for Chromebooks. So there, there was a change in how we did our contract services. So you'll see a change from this year to last year. I apologize. It's supposed to be FY2022. So the new Chromebooks is 380,000. This is, this is number one critical issue. Number two is replacing the old desktops and then purchasing spare laptops for the district. Just because we have, everybody has a laptop right now. They break, you know, and we will like to supply them, you know, while we fix, as we fix the, the broken laptop. So, and, and things happen, so we just want to be careful that we actually have some in stock to help, help the users. Summer help. We need summer help every year. We have big projects coming along. A lot of Chromebooks can roll, restocking carts, repairing damaged Chromebooks. And these, these people work eight hours, half-hour lunch, Monday through Friday, at $11 an hour, looking for two. And that's, that's where our summer help looks like. You know, they work with our, our IT staff to, so we can get ready for the following school year. Priorities moving forward. Finishing an up-to-date technology plan. I, I do have a draft of the plan, but with the leadership change, I wanted to make sure that we are on the same page with, with the new leadership. So it's something I would like to put out eventually, and also with reopening and stuff is, I don't know if it would be a distraction in there. So decided to hold off on that. So technology, you know, plan includes technology, how it impacts learning, professional development, technology refresh cycle, budget, digital citizenship, and social emotional learning. So this goes back, the next bullet point goes back to what we have for our current staff and current ratio of devices per, per tech. So in the users that I mentioned earlier with students and staff, so the current ratio for, 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 for devices per IT tech is 2441 to 1. So that means for every one tech, tech that we have, our Assistant Systems Administrator, they have 24, 441 devices that they are responsible for, and that's on average. Some have more, some have just a tad less. Just doing a little Googling, it looks like the industry standard is 200 to 1. So as you can imagine, that's a lot, a lot to maintain. And these include computer, desktops, Chromebooks, laptops, phones. I, I don't even think I included projectors or anything like that, but we maintain all of those things. And our current staff ratio per tech, that's off. That's, that's, that's all, that's our entire staff. So I, just, that's, that's, that's a little off. So I should have corrected that. So, but that is also high compared to what users have per. Oh, actually, no, that is, that is right because we, I was including staff. I meant that, those are users. So that's staff and students. So it's 1803 to 1, which is also high. Our district has added over 10,000 computing devices in the past five years with no additional IT staff. So one of the priorities moving forward is to Assistant Systems Administrators and have them mimic the model that we have at the high school with a technician at each high school, with a technician at each middle school to support those users there because the middle schools are quite large and they, they almost need a dedicated person there now. But in the future, when with a new one is built, it'd be great to have, you know, a permanent staff member at each middle school. Because right now, our techs have, our Assistant Systems Administrators have usually three elementary schools and then one middle school. So they're, they're working out of four, some, four, three or four schools and then, then in addition. So then the database administrator, so looking to have this database, database administrator oversee, manage, and monitor all data. And because we're, we're becoming a very data-rich school, but we're not really know, or district, but we don't really know what to do with that data. So I think working with curriculum, I think is something that we could really move towards and, you know, improve, you know, decision-making across the district. And then through working with curriculum, I want to identify strategies to bridge a gap between curriculum and technology. Items not being funded. We are not funding requests ceiling mounted projectors. This will be part of future capital improvement projects. Projectors are expensive, and taking that out of the operating budget, I'm not sure it's a priority at the moment, especially with that Chromebook need. So we just, it's just a prioritizing of where we are. So we have limited funds to repair and replace existing ceiling-mounted projectors or any other AV request. We have no funds to add technology other than, other than Chromebooks, other computers or Chromebooks to the classrooms. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I can't, oh, okay. Now I can see everyone. Okay, I see Ms. Zee has questions, and Ms. Brown, and Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Johnson. Go ahead, Ms. Zee. You have the floor.
I only have one question. I'm wondering about the Chromebooks where they didn't come in. How, how, how acute is the need? Was that a real problem for us as far as the, as far as the capability we had thus far this year and going forward until next year when we might get those?
Yes, schools need Chromebooks. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to lay down, play it. There are some schools that really don't have the stock right now because of either damage or they're just with students in remote learning. There are some schools that have none. There are some schools that have a little bit, but there is a need. And I think with the purchases that we make this summer along with the CARES Act, that's going to help our Chromebook situation. But again, with the nationwide shortage of Chromebooks, I, I would be surprised. I would be surprised if if we, you know, if we don't hear something until at least April with with where they are with their orders and then delivery date.
I I think I saw Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown's hand, next. Did you have a question or comment, Ms. Brown?
So I have, I think, five questions. So I'm just going to go in order of your presentation, some of them are going to be short, I think. So are the thirty five hundred Chromebooks that we're waiting for, are they already licensed, or are we going to have to pay that fee after they arrive?
I believe that once we put the order in, that that's what they're locked at.
That's good, that's good to hear, especially, and I will say, that's pretty despicable of a big company in this kind of environment where everybody is so reliant on tech and kids to be doing this to schools, it's pretty awful.
Couldn't agree more.
Yeah, so the fifteen hundred, that was already kind of a scheduled update, correct? We were planning on that in previous years before the remote learning?
Yes, it's going to be a little less less now because of the the increased price, so probably be around thirteen fifty to fourteen to fifteen hundred, but yeah, well, we were trying to figure out ways to actually more or less replace the thirty five hundred Chromebooks, and I think that's where Mr. Donovan and I are going to look into leasing options, so we can have like a like a four-year leasing option where we can get a set of Chromebooks every year to kind of take care of that need of of Chromebooks going end of life, so the the big ones that are going out, the the two bigger years are this year and in in next year, so it's going to be thirty five hundred going up this year and then close to another two thousand going out next year, but after that, yeah, I know, so after that, it's it's it kind of tapers off in the next three years, and then we'll see another that's why we're going to make a more sustainable approach, so the the title one, when that when they, that lot was purchased, this is this is what, I'm not going to blame it, because it's been great, but they all were purchased at the same time, so they're all going to go up at the same time, so.
Yep, that that makes sense, I mean, I'm glad that you guys are planning for it. And I mean, that's things, that kind of ties into my next question, I'm fairly certain I know the answer, but I'd be remiss if I didn't ask it. For the would it be, if you guys don't know cost analysis, would it be cheaper long-term to buy a higher quality machine that has a little bit more sustainable? That's either upgradable or has a little bit longevity? Or since they're going out to kids for daily use and transference, is something more disposable, a better cost option?
Yeah, so it has has nothing to do with how durable the Chromebook is in terms of license, so it's just amount, it's just the software updates, so if let's say I buy a Chromebook today, it'll stop receiving updates four years from now. That regardless of how rugged it is, it it'll still stop, the cheaper one and the rugged one will still stop receiving updates at the same time. They can go as high as four hundred dollars for a Chromebook, so, yeah, it's 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 really like the conundrum that we're we're in with Chromebooks, so I I wish I had the easy solution, say, boom, here it is, but you know, we are exploring all of our avenues to make sure that that schools won't suffer with this.
Thank you, and then I know that you guys work hard and do your very best to get our best bank for our books, so I just felt I had to, I had to ask the question. Let's see, I had, I think, two more questions, one is is the usability of the Franklin Street Building contingent upon us running the fiber from City Hall?
Yes. Yeah, that's that's kind of a because it all connects with our phone systems, all of our servers and network, all those things, that's, it's, it's a must, must-have.
And is the city contributing to that in any way? As we built, purchased the building? I mean, other than, I mean, I realize it's all the same money, but not directly out of our budget?
Let me, Mr. Donovan, can you get to that?
No, the city won't, but there's some possible other options for some funding. So I think I will be able to do it.
All right, excellent, glad to hear that. So the next two are kind of my last two questions are kind of relative to each other. Does this budget take into account the possible need for a remote academy come fall? Is that something that we're discussing, because I mean, obviously, that would change our IT needs significantly, I'm going to guess. Is that, is that in the back of our minds as we're designing this moving forward?
Yep, right, I can say yes, and I I think those conversations have already started between IT Assistant Superintendents and the other directors, so that is part of something I, and I don't want to speak out of turn, Dr. McKinney here or anything like that, but it is something that we that we can look into.
Okay, good, I just, I mean, I just don't want to find us in a huge need of a million dollars all of a sudden. And then finally, my last one is I think in this budget you've presented to us, we are not seeing any additional staff, but it seems like you could really use it, and so I'm just going to advocate on behalf of this, my father has been working in IT at a university for about thirty years, still is. Rides a skateboard around campus, pretty interesting fellow. But he's been, he's like the head of, or one of the top IT guys for the entire College of Arts and Sciences at a university with sixteen thousand people, and he only runs, I think, at his top when he at the top of his workload was running about nine hundred machines to one. So the fact that you're running eight to over two thousand machines per one person, that is a lot of service, so I don't know, if I can advocate for more staff in that direction in some way, I will put it on record. There you go, even one guy, even one guy or girl would make a huge difference.
That's not even a question, I love that statement.
So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I had in order Ms. Giulio and then Ms. Johnson.
Okay, I just have, I think it's a very quick question for you, Greg. I'm glad to see that Destiny Library is included once again in the software budget, I've used it for many, many years before I retired. But looking at the contract services, I don't see anything in there that offers the support for Destiny, I wondered if you could speak to that.
Yeah, we have, we have support through Destiny, I believe that's through our Follitt package, so that's, Follitt owns Destiny. So I believe we, when we do have that, that's what we go through, and we recently moved Destiny to the cloud, so that's, we don't host Destiny anymore, so that's, and that's part of the contract services and the software, is that we get support through the Destiny cloud support.
So, people are able to call and get and get help, it's covered, because I don't see Follitt under the contract services either.
That should be, that should be under software.
Well, I see Destiny.
Yeah. Follitt, Aspen, it's a third line down.
I'm sorry, yep, I thought they were strictly alphabetical.
And Destiny, Destiny is is part of that too, it's just, it's I mean, I have the contract in front of you, but we we call in support to these places all the time, that's included when we purchase software like that.
Okay, that's great, because there is so much that Destiny can do to make our librarians' lives a lot easier. And so I'm glad that there's support, thank you.
Yep.
Ed, Ms. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. First of all, I'd like to find out, what are we doing this year for ROM insurance for these Chromebooks like South Hadley has? Are we going to be implementing that? Or have we, I haven't seen anything come across to us. Because we have all these repairs on Chromebooks, and it shouldn't be costing the district itself with these policies.
We haven't enrolled in any insurance policies yet, but it's something I think that Mr. Donovan and I have talked about you know, at length, about how we're going to fund repairs or damage or losses for the Chromebooks, so.
Well, this year is going to be a very tight year. And, you know, the policy that Hadley, South Hadley had, I don't have it on me, but they started like twenty five and they brought it down for the needs of the students and the family. I mean, we're, I don't care if it's federal dollars, I don't care if it's city dollars or state dollars. We, the taxpayers, shouldn't have to be, you know, footing the bill for this, and then we don't have money to add more Chromebooks, and because we spent money that we shouldn't have, and the policy covers enough, like I think it was two incidents. Spills, breakage, I mean, and that should be done, and this shows accountability to everybody, so I'm hoping that's going to be in this.
I I, can I just ask, is this an insurance policy, or is this a policy for like devices separate, like a, like a like in the student handbook or a school?
No, it's not in the handbook, because it was a joke in the handbook, there was no accountability, no responsibility to anybody. This was the policy I've shown many times, Mr. Donovan, you've seen it, I've held it up, I've emailed it, I believe, to everybody on the board. So this is something that the techno, I don't care which department, technology, Mr. Donovan's department, somebody has to introduce this and get this through, so this way, if we have to buy more Chromebooks, we're not spending money on parts that we shouldn't have to, I mean, it's all part of budgetary, I mean, yes, this is government, but government should be starting to run more like a business. So I'm going to be harping on this continuously. The, let's see. When do we have enough Chromebooks at this point for students, and what happens when it's damaged and they're out of service? What are the students using?
So do we have enough, are you talking about enough Chromebooks to go for a one-to-one student population?
And damaged, when they're damaged, basically, when they're out of service, what happens to the students if they don't have, do we have one to replace it with?
So the schools kept a little bit of stock in as much as they could to you know, to distribute, if a Chromebook comes in and it is damaged, we, there's there's hope that there's enough left at the school for a loner. And and then we replace it, then we bring it back to the school. They're not replaced, but we repair it and then give it back to the school so they can distribute it again. So a lot of that distribution is, and I don't mean to pass the buck, but a lot of that distribution is at the school level. So they they know what their inventory is at the school of their Chromebooks.
Yeah, but they have to talk to you in some capacity, right?
I was mostly at the beginning of the year about what they have for Chromebooks, they've asked if we have Chromebooks left. We don't have any in stock in our IT department.
Okay, so basically, if it's out of service, it's out of service now. Was the IT department involved with, and I got an email from somebody. Did we happen to give out free Chromebooks or computers for pre-K this year, people signing up? Anybody here about that? They sign up for pre-K? Computers went out? Oh, Dr. McKinney. Do you have any answer to that?
Yes, ma'am, that's a grant-funded opportunity through the state, it's called Waterford, I think it's called, Hammond Davies, we enrolled a hundred kids. It's a state initiative. I can forward you the information if you'd like.
Oh, could you please, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And let's say, I was trying to take some notes as we went along here, excuse me for one second here. I think it's hard sometimes when we get this information the day of the meeting and you don't have time to review it, and, you know, so I think that's it for right now, if I have any questions, is it okay? Mr. Greeno, if I send it off with a copy to the full board, so everybody can see this under the right to know law, since this is a public meeting. If I have any additional questions, or would you like me to send it through you?
Um, sure, I I think that would work.
Send it through you or directly to the department heads and the full board?
Let me think. I I think you probably should send it through the, through the president of the Board of Education. That would, that would be the point person for admin to to, then it would go to Dr. McKinney.
I just wanted to run it by you, since you're the chair of the committee.
Right, yeah, no, I I, that's, that's, I I think that would be the best way to do it. And and the other, the other issue that you had, I think you might, we might want to talk to the Chair of the Finance and Operations Committee or
That's me.
Oh, okay, actually, you could, on the agenda, what you can do is that that issue that you had with insurance for the for those Chromebooks, you might want to take that up in committee and maybe someone from IT can can look into, get you some good background, how it works in other districts, it's voluntary, I think you're talking about a voluntary insurance that when, when, when when students receive the Chromebook, they have an opportunity to insure the Chromebook, so if anything happens to it. Maybe, maybe you can discuss it in committee, put it on the agenda, discuss it, have have someone in 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 IT or administration get back to you on how it works in other districts. Get information on it, and then we can come up with a a path forward to institute it, you know, because right now, it seems like it's, you know, you need to sort of get the ball rolling and get it championed and and get it get it done, so the full board can look it over and then, and then and then vote on it and say, okay, yeah, this this looks good.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Zim.
On that topic, as we've talked about it, it keeps occurring to me, I I think of our district as being short-staffed. Administratively, secretaries, the people who do, I mean, obviously, if you only give half of our population a Chromebook, that means that you have to have five thousand contracts, and you have to have somebody to babysit the contracts and enforce the contracts kind of stuff, if you will. And I wonder, just from administrators, do we have the staff to do that, is that one of the reasons that this seems to have gotten lost in the shuffle, and so I guess, I don't have to do it tonight, but it is, it's a question that keeps swirling around in my mind, because I do know they're short-staffed and
Right.
So much out of a
Right, that's a very good question, and it might be a third party that does all that, you know, we don't know, this is why it should go to committee. We, or I think it could be discussed further, because it might be a third party that does it, and we don't have to use extra staff, you know, it might not be but then again, it might, it might be, like you said, it might be, again, taking away too much man-hours from us too, so this is why we need to, I think, discuss it in length that at at one of the committees, I think the, my my own opinion is that the Finance and Operations Committee is probably the best committee for that. And, you know, take it up as 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 an issue then and 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 discuss it and bring as much information as possible, so that we can make an informed decision on it.
Thank you, Mr. Greeno, Mr. Donovan, you and I can talk about this, or you can put it on your, on the schedule for like the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll put it on for the April meeting.
April meeting, perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Greeno, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments regarding technology, I want to thank Mr. Rodriguez, that was a very informed presentation, there's a lot, a lot of information there. And
And to make it as least boring as possible.
It was, it was very good, no, I I I think I got the gist of it. Operations is, your your fiscal increase between fiscal years is under ten thousand dollars for operating budget, so that's, that's, it's almost level funded for the operating budget in IT, so but does anyone else have any questions or comments? If if none, I think we're going to move on to is plant operations next, next in line? And that would be Mr. Smith. You have the floor, Mr. Smith.
Yes, good evening, everybody, I'm on the tough spot here, I have to follow Captain Chromebook. I did catch his little comment there about hugging his computer, so I I can't I can't top that one, but let me work on sharing my screen. There we go, everybody can see that one? Does everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is the plant operations budget overview. Um, just everybody's, I'm sure familiar with this, but our responsibilities are to repair and maintain all the building systems and components, cleaning and sanitizing all the buildings, uh, maintaining the school grounds, which include the playgrounds, sports fields and, uh, basketball tennis courts, safety and security of the school buildings and the inhabitants, uh, also including crossing guards, uh, construction and renovation planning and oversight and implementation of energy-saving measures. My staff currently is as shown on the screen. We have ninety-two custodians, fifteen tradesmen, six groundskeepers, seven security personnel, delivery drivers, secure secretary, uh, myself, two assistant directors and two custodial supervisors. And I didn't count how many physical crossing guards we have, but we have in excess of thirty posts that we maintain. Um, the way is I, I measure success in the program is, uh, providing a suitable, safe learning environment for students and staff. We meet all of the building codes, uh, that we pass, uh, state inspections for school accreditation. And, uh, we're, we're, we just have to be responsive to all the daily, weekly, monthly, annual changes and district requirements, wherever those might come from. So this year in developing our budget, uh, I, I was focused on providing a responsible budget, which is cognizant of competing interests and challenges, but allowing for maintaining our facilities in a safe and solid, educationally solid learning environment. But that I'm specifically talking about, uh, the fiscal constraints the city is going to have in this coming year. I know that we're talking anywhere from a five to seven percent tax increase for the property owners. Um, and, uh, cost of, uh, health insurance is going up. And so I, I, I tried very hard to, to toe the line and I, I think I was successful in doing that. I, I know that, uh, for example, construction materials are starting to really skyrocket, particularly steel. But I still felt that, uh, I should just try to keep things at a level playing field. Uh, one of our goals though is also just to staff the Franklin Street School. And I'll be talking about that a little bit. Uh, we still need to continue replacing our cert, our equipment when it's at the end of its service life. And as we've all forged through this pandemic, um, continue to support that effort in providing PPE and whatever other, uh, initiatives we need. Let's see here. So I believe you all have this information. This is a spreadsheet that I maintain over twenty years. I, I just move things from, uh, right to left as far as columns go. And it kind of provides a, uh, an overview of each of our supply lines, um, equipment lines and whatnot. So the far right-hand side, well, next to last column, which will my cursor showing right here is the request for funding for this coming fiscal year. Uh, right next to it is what we received this year. And then, then if you go back to the far right-hand column, you'll see the percent in, uh, the change, you know, plus or minus. If you see, uh, almost all supply lines, the zero change. Um, and in fact, if you go back through, even back to FY eighteen, you can see a very modest increase over that time period. Uh, we continue as we buy supplies and materials to, to bid them out. Doesn't mean a formal bid necessarily, but we are certainly talking to our vendors and getting comparative quotes from other vendors. Uh, so the one new item on our budget this year is security supplies. I'll talk about that a little bit further. I just want to go through this brief summary. And then we'll talk a little bit more about further down here about the, uh, contract services and the various equipment lines that I have. So the new equipment, the accounting, yeah, new accounting line for security. We are hi- hitting the end of our current contract with the Allied Universal, which used to be Securdyne. They maintain all our security equipment across the district. And we're desirous of having a, another three-year contract with them. They were a little concerned about having to cover the charge of cameras. All these sys, cameras or systems were installed, uh, two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, somewhere in that time range. So for cameras, there, a lot of them are reaching the end of their service life. It was very difficult for the contractor to come up with a, a number and how to support that through a contract. So we talked to him about it and we agreed to take that portion out. Um, and that enabled, uh, them and us to keep that contract at a reasonable level as far as increases go. Um, but the flip side is we still have to replace those cameras as they die. I originally, uh, put in thirty thousand for my request, talking Mr. Donovan, we knocked that down to fifteen, which I think I can make a go over that point. Uh, it's kind of an unknown. You just don't know when these things are necessarily going to break. We have history, we have data, but you still just don't know when things are, are going to go bad. Um, the other item I want to talk about in, in that, from that fir, first spreadsheet was equipment. So my request for, uh, custodian trades equipment, I thought was eighty-eight thousand seven hundred. But the number that was on the, uh, software was sixty-three thousand seven hundred. So after I accused Mr. Donovan of knocking down my number, um, we, we talked about somewhat and I think I just actually put the wrong number in. So, um, I, I then took another look at our, our requirements. I looked at what we spent this, these last couple of years. And the increase that I'm looking for in this area is to provide equipment for Franklin Street School. So, uh, burnisher, auto scrubber, vacuums and other sort of equipment that we have to provide. The number from my spreadsheet, which I think is in your package, uh, for just custodial equipment was seventy-three thousand seven hundred. That did include the Franklin Street requirements. So, um, you know, that, and that's for custodial. For grounds equipment, uh, for some reason, the number in the budget shows a six thousand dollars, but I badly need to replace the sander for our very large, uh, plow trucks. The cost alone is fifteen thousand. Um, so tho, those are a couple n, numbers I'd like to see increase as you, uh, work your way through the budget. Uh, so seventy-three thousand seven hundred for, um, custodial equipment and then fifteen thousand for the grounds equipment. Sometimes I talk ahead of myself from a presentation. So th, this was a spreadsheet where I showed the actual equipment we're buying, uh, the actual number I'd like to buy, uh, but if we just focus on the stuff that's dead or nearly dead, that's where the seven, seventy-three thousand and seven hundred comes from. Uh, as I said, also includes the equipment for our Franklin Street. Trades equipment, this, these are the things that we requested. There's nothing there that I would say that is absolutely have to have. Um, my, my focus this year is on the custodial equipment. I did mention grounds equipment. So down towards the bottom of the spreadsheet, my cursor is, that's the sander. Um, we do replace, uh, we have been replacing two snow blowers every year. Um, that's another four thousand, so that total would be nineteen thousand. Um, if you decided the budget was too tight for the snow blowers, I understand you've actually done a pretty good job of replacing them as time goes on. There we go. So on that front sheet, again, I talked about contract and services and, and the, this is the detail on where that number comes from. You can see that, uh, this current fiscal year, we have a budget number of two hundred and seventy-three thousand. I am proposing we go to two seventy-six. The major reason for that increase is the increase in the, uh, access control or the security program. I, I talked about that earlier. That's going from ninety-four thousand to a hundred thousand. Keep in mind that ninety-four thousand was a price we kept for three years. And the new contract at a hundred thousand is for the next three years. Uh, everything else, uh, some minor changes here and there, but, uh, the item that came off the list was the, uh, the two items came off the list. One was the, uh, here re-inspection, which we do every three years. That's the, uh, testing and, uh, documentation of asbestos we have in our schools. And then, uh, we have to flame coat our stage curtains every three years as well. That came off the budget. So continuing on back to kind of my, my master spreadsheet here. Um, this is the second half of that. Our HVAC maintenance has actually gone down eleven percent. Um, everything else on this sheet pretty much has stayed the same. In fact, it's almost exactly the same. So when I look at the port, portion of the budget that I control myself somewhat, uh, with your help, of course, uh, thi, this is not personnel. This is just supplies and equipment. It actually went down over last year. So one million eight twenty-nine down to one million eight eleven. Um, so I think that's a pretty responsible budget to present to you. Uh, so this is the HVAC equipment, their maintenance contracts. These are all with, uh, contract control technologies, which is CTI, um, or Siemens. Those are our two controls contractors. And you can see most, most of these things are, are pretty, pretty, pretty steady. Um, the, the one item came off the books. That's right where my cursor is. We had to do an upgrade on our control systems at the high schools. And this current year is the last year for that. So that comes off the books and that results in the decrease in that, that budget. Uh, one of the things we, uh, try to do every year. So as you're aware of, there's operating costs, uh, minor repairs, that sort of thing. Then there's deferred maintenance and capital costs, which I'll be getting into. Uh, but then there's those, those numbers in between that range from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, requesting the same money, money this coming year as we received this year, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And those projects have to do with, uh, moving underground storage tank, which, uh, those are dinosaurs at this point. But we had one at Dr. Crisp and we changed out the emergency generator this past year from, uh, or, or, you know, from oil to, uh, natural gas. And we do have to remove that storage tank. Um, some repairs of the north, or south high school gym, uh, bleacher repairs of both. We did have an inspection done, uh, this past fall that identified the things we have to fix. Nothing is, uh, unsafe, but there are things we should address. Uh, replace a water heater at Charlotte Avenue Elementary. Uh, North High School, we need to replace, uh, a lot of the curtains and the curtain hardware on the stage. Keep in mind, it still seems to me like that was just built, but that's twenty years ago now. Um, replacing, uh, some boiler expansion tanks at Fairgrounds Middle School. Actually seeing if we can fold that into the construction project, but it's still pending. Uh, and replace some of the keying systems at, at the high schools where we've, uh, gone from the old keying system to a new one that's been introduced across the entire school district, except for the high schools. So I just want to get everything uniform. And, uh, so we walk around with one key, basically. Um, so personnel-wise, uh, took a couple of cuts in the past. Uh, we cut the ten custodians back in, uh, FY eighteen, went from a hundred two down to ninety-two. Um, that is, uh, basically left me with zero flexibility and when the people are out. I do have overtime, but that's kind of an expensive way to, to, to treat the issue. Um, I feel the cleanliness of the schools has gone down as a result of that. Um, but, and I've said this before and I'm, I'm not throwing this at, at you as, as a board of it, I'm just saying we all have to be the judges of what's, what's good enough as far as cleanliness goes in our schools. I think it'd be better, but I also understand the fiscal constraints we're under. So what I had requested was to restore three of those ten and that did not make the cut. I, I didn't push too hard, again, recognizing the fiscal constraints we're under. And I, uh, lost a HVAC mechanic almost ten years ago now. Uh, we've made do without it. It was strictly for preventive maintenance. Um, I would like to get it back, uh, but we'll just have to see. That's a future thing. So two things that we absolutely do have to have are some custodians for Franklin Street Elementary School. So I need somebody in the daytime, uh, and somebody in the evening. I do have a position that currently spends part of his time at the Brentwood School. So effectively I'll have one and a half people to clean at nighttime and one in the daytime. So one of the things that, uh, Dan suggested we cover are under other funding sources that we, we rely on. So deferred maintenance I talked about. Uh, I annually put in what I think we need and annually get disappointed. Again, I understand. But, uh, we got zero dollars through the regular budget process last year. And, uh, subsequently, I think it was through the one ton, one-time funds, Dan, that we, uh, is that correct? That we got four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, which I'm still working on spending. Um, I'm taking my time with it just in case we have to address additional issues at Franklin Street. But I, I definitely have a plan there. I'll, you'll actually see that, uh, in some coming slides. Uh, and you're all aware of this already. We, we went through the capital improvement process this past fall and uh, we presented to the Capital Improvement Committee back in January. And, uh, still waiting for the results of, of their recommendations. But if you just look at the backlog that we have, it's about twelve million dollars in deferred maintenance. So this talks about the capital program. So that's the other funding source. Is when we have major school construction projects goes through, uh, usually it typically is a bonding process. But this is kind of the outlook. This is what I presented to the Capital Improvement, uh, Committee in January. Uh, the very top line shows the middle school construction project comes a hundred and twenty million dollars. That's what we currently have in place. I can say that we're doing pretty well from all the, uh, actual costs. And we will probably have a surplus when all comes in, all said and done. Uh, Fairgrounds Middle School, we have a surplus now. And, uh, Penachak, uh, we're supposed to get our, our guaranteed maximum price from the contractor this, uh, coming, uh, joint special meeting. So, but it sounds like that's, uh, looking good as well. Um, so school, next schools in the mix, uh, to start and that I just, these are just dates that can move one way or the other, uh, main duncible, Birch Hill, uh, Pleasant New Surles, then we kind of, this is where I came in, working for the school district and, and, uh, twenty-four years ago, the bicentennial, um, and Dr. Crisp were just wrapping up their renovations. So it's, it's, uh, I'll be pushing thirty years between renovations for them. Um, at some point, we do have to look at replacing the turf at Stella Stadium. Uh, that is the estimate to do that work. Um, at some point, the North High School, as I mentioned earlier, seems like we just built that. But if you drive around the, the, the parking lot there, you can see a lot of cracks and bumps in, in the pavement. So we have to address that at some point. And then my continued focus on security across the district. So other funding sources, uh, Capital Committee Reserve Fund, uh, that's the, is something that the city maintains. It's, they manage it for the, the fleet of all the departments. Uh, this year, w, we're replacing three vehicles, uh, sedan, a box van, a cargo van. The, uh, box van will go to food services, I believe. The cargo is for tradesmen and the sedan is to replace one of the office supervisor vehicles. This coming year, we, uh, currently have the, the fund, uh, the backhoe, uh, another cargo van and another sedan. I can say that's, that process has worked very well for the school district. We've been able to replace vehicles, uh, not as, when they're dead, but, you know, when they're well along and at the end of their service life. CARES Act, um, I think we're all familiar with that. That, that's funded all of our PPE and, and sanitation devices, foggers, everything we've used to, the shields between desks. Um, and so that, that's helped us get through this pandemic. Uh, we just wrapped up the Public School for Structure Fund that paid for all this, the security vestibule work. At a number of schools, two middle schools was actually Fairgrounds and Penetech as part of the construction process there. But that particular work is done, the main Dunstable, Birch Hill, Sunset Heights and Led Street. And both high schools also saw improvements to their security vestibules. I guess that's in my my presentation here. I used to watch Bartles and James, and I thank you for your support. I truly mean that. I think we have great schools. We just need to keep our foot on the pedal and. One of the things, I've said this before, you've heard it before, as we continue to push back on deferred maintenance and. And the backlog just grows by not taking care of things in a timely manner, that's when costly renovations occur. I know it's, again, it's a tough budget year, so I don't expect any improvement in that that area. But I guess I'm ready for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I just want to say for the record that Ms. Bishop has joined us. I I saw Ms. Johnson's hand up for questions. You have the floor, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. First of all, on. I was writing all over, so we skipped through everything. What is the year of the box truck and how many miles are on it?
I'll have to get back to you, Ms. Johnson, on that.
Could you do it on the box truck cargo van and the sedan, please?
I will do on all three, yes. Those are for the current fiscal year replacement, right?
Exactly, exactly. I used to do that with the police department, too, every time they wanted their vehicles changed out. Also, if you if you don't have the answer to this, you can get back to me on this also. So can you tell me, because back in the day, I remember that with the school district, if I'm remembering correctly. Parks and Recs would help plow out the schools with snowstorms. Is that still occurring?
Yes, it is. It's changed somewhat because they are now responsible for. Plowing out city streets to a greater extent than they used to be. So they do a tad less and we usually have to go up and finish the work. But my department now does both high schools. It does Penetech Middle School. It does Led Street in the Administration Building. And it does Elm Street. Elm Street is kind of where we both meet and whoever gets there first takes care of it. So it's, they don't do all the schools. I guess that's my message. We do quite a few of them.
Okay, but did they always do all the schools? Or did you kind of split it?
It was split.
Kind of split it back then, too?
We've always done, like back then, it was just one high school. We always did that one. I believe we've always done Penetech. But the other places have been added along the way.
Okay, so which trucks, and you can send it to the to the board, too. I'd like to know, what kind of trucks do you have that's plowing and sanding?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you right now, we have two international trucks. They are, I want to say about fifteen years old at this point. We purchased them through a lease program. And so those are our two trucks that we use for the high schools especially. And for any main, major parking lots we have to do. Everything else is with a pickup truck. And I probably have four or five of those with a plow that do that. Most of the pickup trucks also have a sander in them, as do the two big internationals.
Okay. And which ones do you, are you replacing the sander on? Or how many sanders?
We're placing one sander for one of the internationals.
Do you know if the city is purchasing any sanders this year?
I do not know if they are, no.
Because I'm wondering if they're purchasing any, maybe they might have one that's still in halfway decent condition that we might be able to get.
I could certainly check on that.
That would be good. And how much is this standard? Because I'm trying to watch the presentation. And some of them were out of order a little bit and. The numbers and everything on the sheets that you gave, it's not very clear and I like to take notes on everything. And so how much was the sander again?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, okay. Now, when you're talking about. Let me get this. I've got notes all over everything. Major repairs. So anything that's over ten thousand dollars are we going to be having bids on?
Most likely. Let me go back to that slide if I could. So definitely, one, two, three. I would say, yes, yeah, yes.
And the bids you will, bids will be coming to us so we can read the bids as.
Yes, yeah, the very last one. Well, first of all, the expansion tanks, I'm hoping to get done through construction. The peak's keying system is a proprietary keying system that the school district owns. And that might be a sole source, but either way, I will, I will explain that when the time comes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And you're talking about security. I don't know if this is part of your security or anything. About where the vaccines are being given out in the back of the parking lot, the high school, is that. Where would that come under? Because I know as we're going to be opening up, hopefully, the school. Do we have any security? But I know that there's police cars out there and people have to wait fifteen, twenty minutes, but my concern is. The traffic backing up and security. I mean, we put so many security measures in the. In our schools, this would kind of fall under security. So is anything with plant operation doing anything with that? Or is that going to be separate?
Nothing that affects the budget. We work closely with the National Guard there. They are providing plenty of troops to escort. Traffic to the proper place. They have a very well laid out traffic plan. They tend to slow things down when they know that school is starting for the day or ending at the end of the day. So I think we have a pretty good system working with them. But security wise, as far as school district goes. We don't have too much of an effort on our part. We do have security cameras covering their area. So if something does happen, then we can document it.
Okay. I think that's it for right now. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Does anyone else have, Ms. Odin? You're still on mute.
Okay, thank you. I had to unmute myself. I couldn't do that. I will say that I did take a ride around North School this year. Matter of fact, this week. And that road going around that goes. By the river, I guess that's the front of the school. That is in really tough shape. So I think it's. That's something that's going to have to be addressed fairly soon. I don't think the buses go around the school that way. But I know there's a parking lot in back and that that school, that road is in really tough shape.
The bus loop is on the front. As you approach the school, it's on the front. And the back road is. I'm here where the teachers go, because the teacher's parking lot is on the backside. It's a fire lane as well, so any emergency vehicles have to use that space.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown. You have the floor.
Thank you. First, I want to give credit to your department. Mr. Smith, about for all the extra environmental challenges the facilities have faced this year. You guys have really embraced that and taken care of it, and I really appreciate it. And also, I'm wondering if you can scroll back up to the. Deferred Maintenance list. I was actually thinking the exact same thing as Mrs. Odin. With those numbers are starting to get pretty high. I think there was a twelve million dollars. Actually, I guess I was looking at the one for the parking lot and you were talking about. Actually, maybe I sit down further. I'm sorry, maybe it wasn't deferred maintenance. Yes, that's the capital program. Is that money that eventually we're looking at bonding out? Or is that stuff that, or is that just things that have been pushed out and pushed out and pushed out?
I would say, well, it's a two-part answer to the, how we'll probably pay for it. It's probably going to be bonded. As we get to the end of any construction project, there's generally money left over. And the alderman then pass a resolution that can utilize leftover money on the next project. So, for example, the design fees, preliminary design fees at Main Dean Birch Hill. Probably could be funded in part by any money that might be left over from the middle school project. Stello Stadium, we do have a capital reserve fund. Maybe Mr. Donovan might have an idea how much is in there. I want to say about two hundred thousand. But it may actually be less at this point.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but correct me if I'm wrong. These are projects that you were hoping to get done. Over the last few years, but they continually have been bumped, bumped because we've been trying to flatline the budget or keep it low.
Not necessarily. You know, the deferred maintenance items will feed a construction project. So the more things get deferred, the bigger that construction project might become. So it's not really a straight answer for him, I'm afraid. But you know, the Stella Stadium turf replacement, the pavement replacement, those have kind of been planned there all along. So it's just, we know how long the turf at Stella Stadium will last, for example. So that's where we pigeonhole that particular work. We had an assessment done of all the pavement around the North High School by a consultant. And that's the number they came up with.
Okay, excellent. Well, I'm glad to hear that. Actually, it's better than my original impression. I was thinking that these were things that have continually been delayed. And as you mentioned, you know, the cost of steel is going up, construction materials are going up. If you wait until there's a leak in your roof, then you got to pay to replace the roof and check your walls for water damage. So I don't want to stick it out too far that we're in a situation where we're doubling our costs. For to just maintain the nice facilities we already have specifically, you know, I was thinking, I was looking at Stellows and Nashua North. You know, Stellows is a treasure for Nashua and it would be very sad to let it get in disarray. Are we in a situation where you feel comfortable that. You're going to be able to get the finance financing that you need over the next few years for these projects? Or do you feel like you need the board members to advocate for funding on your behalf, on the behalf of these projects?
Yeah, if I go back to your original thought first, though, Main Dunstable and Birch Hill are important for a variety of reasons. One of those are open concept and we're kind of getting away from that as a school district. That in itself provides a security issue for any sort of lockdowns that we might want to have. And then finally, you have univentilators across the entire perimeter and then you have a central system on the inside of the school. And those fight each other. So that's why those particular schools are important, probably to do next. I want to say we're in pretty good shape. When the time comes for these different projects, I will certainly come to the Board of Ed and ask you to advocate. I have talked to the Alderman Dow, the Joint Special Chairman, about these other projects being on the horizon. And so he's aware of it. Basically said, yeah, we will certainly address that when the time comes. Yeah, I mean, I think we're in a decent shape and as far as my operating budget, I think. It'll be tight, but I think everything's going to be tight next year.
All right. Thank you, as usual, for your thoroughness.
Are there any other comments, questions? I see Ms. Zim, you have the floor, Ms. Zim.
I just, I just want to, as we're talking about all of this. This year, I was talking to one of the aldermen in Manchester and he commented. On how lucky we were in Nashville to keep our buildings in such good condition. I know Mr. Smith might find that challenging, but I think he was saying in comparison to theirs. And as I think about this, Brian McCarthy comes to mind. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say how lucky as a city we were to have his. Years and years and years of service. And I remember him specifically, one time I voted against something he had voted for. That he wanted, and he came over to me and he said, Mrs. Zim, if we do not continually keep these projects on the horizon. If we don't continually keep something in the pipeline, we'll end up and they'll all be a mess. And he said, so we have to, he was dedicated. And so. We're lucky that we have Alderman Dow and I'm sure he's finding it quite a challenge, but I would like. I would just like to say that Brian McCarthy was. He was a godsend for this city for many, many years and his service was certainly appreciated, I think, by all of us. I think Sean would say amen to that. So thank you.
Definitely. Just to follow on one more thought, we just recently. Received notice and maybe Mr. Donovan's already talked to you about this, we're getting additional funds from the state. Because of the CARES Act two or three, whatever number we're on. Twelve point nine million or somewhere number like that. And talking to Dan yesterday, we don't have any criteria for that. But my hope is we could at least take a portion of that money and put it into our facilities. It's money that runs out in September of twenty twenty-three, so we have two plus years to spend it. I'm pretty good at spending money, if you haven't noticed. So I have some plans and I'm still formulating plans on how we can do that.
I think about, we have eighteen school buildings, right? But how many buildings do we have total? That doesn't include all the buildings, does it?
Well, we have, of course, we have the Administration Building. We have my building complex. We have a program at the church, the Title One Program. And with the Brentwood, which we're currently renting out. So the Brentwood will be going to Franklin Street this coming fall.
So we have twenty-one.
Yeah.
A lot of square footage. Thank you. A lot of square footage.
Yep. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to go back. So that twelve point nine million, is that coming to the city, did you say?
I think if Mr. Donovan's on, he should probably answer that. I think it's for the school system, but.
Well, that's what I mean.
At this point, you know, I have not told the board about it because it's not official yet. Mr. Smith sort of jumped the gun here. It is CARES Act funding. There is a sheet that shows that amount. It's not finalized. And we've yet to receive guidance on how we can spend it. So. We do know some things, but I figured until we get all the facts. There's no sense to, the last thing I wanted was a whole bunch of people coming to me on how to spend the money. So with patience, we will have answers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read in news. I'm sorry, Mr. Mc, Dr. McKinney and then Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
These are S R two funds. We have to spend down S R one before we can start spending the next year funds. So we have some funds that we have to. Spend before the end of September twenty twenty-one, before we can get into the next round of funds. And there's conversations now from the feds around an S R three funding piece. So I've talked to the state coordinator. We have an idea about what the number might be, but again, until it shows up in the grant management system. It's just somebody's speculation in the number. We'd like to see it live and in the system and like to go to a training on. What the allowable's are. There's certainly more flexibility in terms of. The air filtration, HVAC, learning loss, a number of different categories. So when we have all that information, we certainly will share it with the board.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I did read in the news, it's been in the news that more money is coming. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Oh, thank you very much, all of you, because that can change the whole dynamics of this budget if that money does appear. Okay, just wanted some more clarification on. Um, okay, just wanted some more clarification on it. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Yep, no problem. Uh, is there anyone? Anyone else? I think we're we're going to move on to the next subject. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. There's always excellent presentation. Ms. Giulio, did you want to say something before we move on? Okay. Uh, okay, so our next subject is going to be career and technical education, CTE, and we have uh Ms. Ogara, I'm going to turn the uh the floor over to to you.
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
Thank you. I'll share my screen. Um. Okay, so the Nashville Technology Center is um is doing very well. We um we're promoting our 21st century learning skills. Our students are preparing for careers and we are partnering with colleges and businesses. And you can see some of our students in their um in their work environment. And CT is important. More students in the CTE programs tend to be high school completers and the graduation rate is 93%. Um, that's a nationwide figure. It's probably higher in New Hampshire. Um, 75% of CTE students go on to enroll in college. And the Nashville Technology Center is the largest technology center in the state. We have 18 programs. And currently this year, we have served 1,164 students. We did lose some students due to the scheduling issues because of the pandemic. So that probably would have been closer to almost 1,300. These are the programs our students are enrolled in. As you can see, there's 117 in the accounting program. We have one student currently from one of the area schools. Not all of the area schools realized we uh we had business programs they could also come into. So we're starting to pick up with the business programs. Currently, there are 53 students in automotive. 10 of these students are from other schools. Now, our area schools are Milford, Merrimack, Hollis, Hudson and Amherst. A biotech programs, a nationally award-winning program. We have 64 students and one student from the area school. Currently, this 67 students in our business finance program. And again, you'll see the area schools aren't represented. Um, but that's changing this year. Uh, CAD programs, 34 students. Again, this uh students in this program have won national awards at Skills USA. There were 95 students in the careers and education program, and that includes running the Panther preschool, which I think now is probably up to its third generation of Nashville uh students. And we have two students from the area schools. The computer networking program is partnered with Cisco Systems and it is branching into uh cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is becoming one of the uh main semester courses in the networking program. And that has two area students in it. The construction technology program has 34 students. Uh, this stu- this program is probably one of the oldest programs at the high school. And we don't have any area students in that. Cosmetology is a very popular program. It's popular with the area schools as well as our Nashville students. The culinary arts program has 87 students and um three of them are from area schools. Visual and design and visual communications has 46 and one student from an area school. The electrical technology program has 33 students and it's usually very well subscribed. And 13 of the students are from area high schools. Engineering has 58 students with one student from an area high school. And that is because some of the high schools have their own engineering programs. Health sciences, again, very well subscribed, oversubscribed, uh, takes in a multitude of careers in health sciences and allied health. That has 103 students. They receive an LNA license at the end of their um two years if they pass the examination. And that has 11 area students. Our HVACR is 41 students, five from an area high school. And this program has grown over the last few years. Our manufacturing program is being redesigned. We recently partnered with a local industry that is coming in to help us redesign the lab that has four students and currently no area students. Our marketing program has 148 students. And currently, as I mentioned before, with the business programs, the area students haven't enrolled. But that's changing this year. And we have an award-winning video production program. Um, there's 52 students and two are from area high schools. And again, this, these are our programs, 18 of them. And I think the credit for the success of our programs lies in our teachers. Just are very experienced, 10, 15, 20, 30. It's a couple even approaching 40 years. Uh, they have been teaching our students. And students have their parents that acknowledge that they have had a class with the teachers in Nashville Technology Center. So we're seeing second and third generation students. These are our education partners, Rivier University, Southern New Hampshire University and the Community College System of New Hampshire. And we are bringing our budget in at level funding for $193,155. Any questions? And this is our video production class.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Zim and then Ms. Oden.
I'm sorry. I hope I didn't jump in front.
That's okay.
So you you put there how many are in the classes? Can you make us a list of how of how many are at their maximum capacity? Uh, in other words, what is their maximum capacity? I look at the the cosmetology, for instance, and I ask myself, is that, does that mean that 90 is their capacity? Or the, I mean, the different ones, I just wondered if, well, like the video, is that their capacity? Are they at full? How many of them are at full capacity and how many are not? That's the, that's the kind of thing that I would be interesting for me. I I I'm sure you don't have that.
Oh, no, I can tell you. Yeah, after all these years, I can, um, our lab courses are separated into our lab programs versus our classroom programs. So for instance, finance, accounting, marketing. Those, those are uh classroom classes and those labs hold 24 students. So the capacity for those classes are 24. For the lab classes like construction, electrical, manufacturing, computer networking is 18 students. And currently this year, and it's cyclical, it changes from year to year, Sandra. You know, it it depends on what the kids are interested in. So this year, health sciences, but that holds true for most years. Health science is this oversubscribed. Um, automotive was oversubscribed. I don't know if next year the registrations on all in, if that's going to be oversubscribed. Let's see what other one was.
Cosmetology?
Cosmetology is usually oversubscribed. And I think it was culinary arts. They may be oversubscribed, subscribed, excuse me. So what we do in a case like that is we we're going to run a lottery system. It's ran through random Excel and it will select the students through the lottery system. Because we don't have the lab space to expand the lab. So we can only safely have 18 students in a lab at one time.
And there was one of the classes that you were that you were talking about where it seemed to be low. It seemed to be low, but you were getting a new, there used to be a a program at the old Matthew Thornton Building in that new building up up by there. It used to, that was a manufacturing, I believe. Is that gone now? Are we looking to replace that or is that what you were saying? I don't know.
No, one of the uh local industries has partnered with us and they're going to come in and they're going to redesign the lab for us. They're on the advisory board for manufacturing. We we just had an announcement. It was in The Telegraph. It's Deco from Brookline, New Hampshire. And they're a construction and engineering company. They've been very active in um retro or fitting up the pharmaceutical plants for the uh to produce the vaccine. And they they're coming in and they're going to redesign the welding area and what machinery we need so our students can be up to date. And then next week at your full board meeting, I think Dr. McKenna had, Dr. McKenna has an announcement for you that will also tie into this program.
And so the other man, can I just ask you, did the other company go out? They haven't gone out, have they?
Which company is that?
The Matthew Thornton Building in that building that sits up in in front of it. They had a um, it was manufacturing, definitely. It was wonderful. I'll I'll get it and I'll call you.
Yeah, if you can let me know. I'm not sure of which one it was.
Thank you. Yeah, it was very active at one time. Thank, great program. Great. All of this is wonderful.
We're going to get it back there again because there's a need in the area.
Oh, absolutely. It's um hands-on is always, always a knee. Thank you. And thank you for the, thank you for the, thank you for the overview. Thank you for your effort. Appreciate it.
Trying to be mindful of everyone's time.
Hey, I had um, I have Ms. Oden and then Ms. Giulio and I think Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Marino. Uh, thank you, Ms. Ogara. I have a question. I I'm looking at automotive. We have a total of 53 students and 10 of them are area students. Do we have to, because we're regional and do we have to provide a percentage of openings for sending schools? We couldn't just fill them all up with Nashville students, could we?
No, we can't because there's a pen, there's a regional agreement and there's a new one pending. In order to be fair for our students coming from Nashville to to take courses in Hudson, we need to reciprocate. And this year, it looks like one of the popular programs in Hudson is going to be well oversubscribed, but it hasn't been in past years. You know, so students, you know, it's cyclical. Whatever piques their interest in a certain year, that's where they go to that program. So we're going to be sending probably more students to Hudson next year. So we need to allot for that in the different programs. If some of our programs are undersubscribed, we can take more area students in order to fill the programs.
Oh, I understand that, but do we have to leave a certain number open for area students?
We do.
And and what is that? Is it percentage?
Um, it's been very fluid. It uh up until this point, it's usually maybe three seats for each sending school.
Three seats? Does it depend upon the program and how many it can accommodate or is it just three?
It's it's three, but if it can accommodate more, we take more.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hey, I had uh, I had Ms. Giulio and then Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just have, I hope this is a quick question. And I just wondered, I know how highly regarded your programs are. And I know that that students were able to actually physically go to the the high schools to participate in these programs on Friday despite COVID. But I'm wondering if if the um the time that they were not able to do hands-on work in the schools had any effect on how they completed or they're going to complete their programs by this June. So I'm thinking in particular maybe of the LNA program. If you have seniors who are finishing, will they still be ready to take that test that you you described?
We're working on that right now. There is an independent testing facility that the instructor is looking at. And we're looking at funding, uh, outside funding outside of the district from the state to assist the students in doing that because they have not been able to have the clinical hours that they ordinarily would have. But we're working on on doing that for them.
Thank you. Um, I just was concerned because I know when we saw the graduations last year that you had many of the students that were wearing their LNA sashes with their robes and they were very, very pleased. So thank you.
We have wonderful instructors, so they're working very hard to make this happen for them.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to say these programs are very important because not every student wants to go to college and not every student can go to college. And there's a lot of students that want to get um hands-on learning and able to go out there and work without big bills from college. Um, and I want to say thank you for the presentation and um I've got a cosmetologist's license. My sons have gone through the automotive program when it first started in the high school. And I hope to see success this year that the, our students will be back in school and be able to be back in the classrooms and actually be in these programs because it's very important for their um socialization and also for their um cognitive learning piece. Because Zoom can't do this, or you can't do automotive by Zoom. You have to get your hands dirty and you can't cut hair by Zoom. So, but thank you for this presentation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hey, um, is there anyone else that has any comments or questions for Ms. Ogara? Thank you very much, Ms. Ogara. Very informative presentation.
You're welcome.
Um, I think we're at the end of our agenda. We, unless someone has any, go ahead, Mr. Donovan. You have the floor, Mr. Donovan.
Yes, um, uh, might I suggest that um if you have any questions, I took notes today. But if you have any other questions, you sort of run them through me. I think historically, that's how we've done that. It was a better way. You have one point person to get everything back. Certainly, I don't typically can answer all the questions, but I can reach out to all the great people in the district and get the responses required. And just to let everyone know that next week we will have presentations from special education, ELL and transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I should have, I should have mentioned that from from years past. That's how we worked it and that worked out pretty well. So thank you. Um, Ms. Zim.
Will they give us a a small overview of immigration when they do ELL and and special transportation? Or will we get any, I I I find that immigration very interesting and I, we get something on that. Is that included in one of the other programs?
What do you mean by immigration?
Well, we we had at one of our, somewhere, one of our meetings, one of the teachers got up and shared about the immigration. We have a a body. I don't even know how many. That's kind of one of the things I'm wondering about. But anyway, uh, you know, he was saying that um you know, that they they have, they come and they don't, they have, it was very interesting to hear about the immigration population and how the challenges it has in teaching. Because before you can teach them, they have to have a place to live, they have to have, I don't know. And I just wondered if there'd be an overview of that somewhere in all of this. Does that have a separate budget?
Well, I think next week, the ELL, they'll speak to that as part of the ELL.
Okay.
Anyone else? Um, Ms. Johnson?
Is there any way we can get copies of the presentation prior to next Wednesday, maybe in our Friday packets? So we can review them prior to?
Possibly, um, it depends on when I get them. So possibly. I don't have them all right now. I don't have them all right now, so I can't give you a definite answer to that question right now.
Or can we get whatever you get prior to? Because it makes it a lot easier with the presentation.
Yeah, you can certainly get anything I get. What I'm saying is right now I don't have all those presentations. So, but I can, you know, if you, if you want, I can easily email them. They're all emailable.
Okay.
And then we could follow up with the hard copies later if we don't have everything done on Friday.
Okay. Because it's crazy. We're making separate trips, you know? Today is Wednesday and we got this morning and it's just more trips, more gas that's going up. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Oden?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just want to thank Mr. Donovan and his team for getting this all organized. I, I know it's been a difficult year. And you put a lot of effort into this. And I want to thank Dr. McKinney and his team for working on this with us. I thought it was very well presented, very understandable in a very tough year. And Ms. Cancela, to you and your crew who do all the running off and make all those holes so we can put them in a notebook. Thank you very much. It's appreciated.
You're welcome.
You make these Zoom meetings happen too, so. Okay, great. Very well said. Yeah, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded by Ms. Gilio. Motion to adjourn was by Ms. Zim. On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Sandra Zim?
Yes.
Raymond Guarino votes yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:59 PM.